... blessings that we have received from thee. Pray for thy spirit to be with us tonight as we meet and counsel together that peace may prevail, that we can have voices and opinions heard, and that good decisions can be made for the benefit of our community. Thankful for all those who sacrificed their time to serve and to listen and to lead. And pray that all of us here in the Brigham City area, that we can become more involved in our community and make our voices heard to help build and strengthen this little town. We pray for this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Bishop.
Will the audience please rise? Repeat the pledge of allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Bishop Jensen and Councilmember Smith. We appreciate your service and leading us tonight. Bishop, you're welcome to leave whenever you need to, so, okay. We have a recognition. We have a new hire in the library, Claire Chenavar. And I don't think she's here tonight, but we want to welcome her to the Brigham City family. Happy that she can be working with us. We need a motion to accept or a movement on the consent.
Move that we approve all consent items as outlined.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It seems to be unanimous, motion passes. We have, we want, we have some appointments. Scott Mildenhall has the vice chair of the planning commission and the reappointment of Cindy McConkey to the planning commission and the appointment of Jason Co-Peters to the joint advisory board. I don't think any of them are here tonight, but we're grateful for their service. These are volunteer positions and they get, a couple of them get just as much of abuse as we do sometimes, so we're happy that they're willing to serve in our community. We'll now have our public comments. Public comments are for those Brigham City residents that live within Brigham City, pay property taxes in Brigham City, or can run for public office in Brigham City. The time is yours for three minutes apiece, and that starts now.
How's it going? Michael Scholl from Brigham City. I wasn't here last council session, so I just wanted to say thank you to Councilmember Troxell for the work that she's done on the committee she's been on. I appreciate your help and your diligence there, and I look forward to working with Councilmember Joel, and so I appreciate all the work that you council members are doing. And it's good to see that you're very concerned about the community here. So, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Julian Larson, Brigham City, Utah.
Don't be afraid of it.
No, I'm not afraid of it. I just can't see my paper if that's in my face. Don't chew my time yet. Okay, I would like to talk to you a little bit about, in backtracking, what you did in July with regards to item number one under your action items on your agenda for tonight. And I'd like to repeat a couple of things here and see if any of them sound familiar. When you talked about this the last time, you listed an item called wetlands, and it said that it was proposed for roads and lots located on non-wetlands except for Lot 5, which complements and fulfills the looping road system. Remember that. That's going to be right next to a road, okay? Having said that, I look at what you did this time, and I'd like to just read a couple of things that you have here on the memorandum regarding this issue. The Stub Street, you identify that and where it's going to extend to, and it says 1450 north, or 1450 west, north of 300 north, to the north property line is to be improved and dedicated with Lot 5 site improvements. And Lot 5 was the one lot that was identified as having wetland issues. But in reviewing all of your documents, I don't see anything that anybody says we mitigated the land, we swapped it out so we can do what we need to to it. I don't see anything that says we dealt with the environmental people in terms of this. So, you know, it makes me wonder, and everything carries down, and in your employee comments, this, the zoning list, this is an M2 zone to provide areas for heavy industrial uses. And I remember the man talking when he was addressing this before, that there would be large trucks that would be going in and out of there. So, we've got this nice road going along this large Lot 5, which is, and it keeps talking about what's going to be done there and what's going to happen there. And then, under your staff comments, you have community and economic development removed. Note number three, as commented by GIS, the note should be removed completely as not to cause concern or issues with the FEMA reference. This note appears to be carryover from another plat location, okay? But then you say on note three, Lots 6 and 7 are not within FEMA flood zone. This note should be completely removed to avoid any misrepresentation. I'm only a 50-plus-year resident of the city, and I'm very familiar with the ground down that way since we are adjoining in several places, and we have always been told that that is wetland. And when we start watching and seeing what's going on down there, and nobody makes any notes about what they're going to do to mitigate this, and is somebody going to buy that lot and be stuck with having to develop that and pay for all the mitigation, and it's just still floating out there as wetlands? So, I think we need to pay a little more attention to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any virtual comments?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. If there are no more public comments, then we will close public comment period and turn to our council member comments, and we'll start with Councilmember Jensen, if he has any.
Sure. Couple of weeks, last week, Ryan and I were able to go with Jason and tour most of the city areas and meet most of the directors and some staff, and it was very enlightening what we signed up for. There's a lot of good people running a lot of departments. I didn't realize exactly how big and how much is going on, but it's very impressive.
Thank you. Is that all?
That's it.
Okay. Council, or Mayor Protem.
I haven't had any committee meetings yet. I've been given the opportunity to listen in on the Legislative Policy Committee meetings with the Utah Leagues of Cities and Towns. As everyone knows, we're in the beginnings of the legislative session with the state. And I just am very impressed with the amount of work that the Utah Leagues does for the cities. In this meeting, you have council members and stuff from every city and town, and they're so good to answer everybody's questions. They kind of seem to know how it would impact, any sorts of legislation would impact cities. They listen to the voices and talk with our legislatures about the city's concerns. And so, I'm really excited to continue listening in on those and making sure that any legislation at the state level does not negatively impact Brigham City. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, just reiterate what Matt said, is taking the tour around all of the different facilities and stuff that Brigham City has, and just impressed, how impressed I am with all of our directors and the things that they're doing and the way that they control things and the knowledge that they have was, they lost me within about two sentences, which isn't hard to do, but lots of great people that run our city, and I'm just, yeah, blown away by the things they accomplish.
Mayor, I did not have any committee meetings the past couple of weeks, so I don't have anything to report.
Thank you, Councilmember Farr. Councilmember Olson?
I think that the mayor did that on purpose. That was a moment of, no, sit over there and think for a minute about what you've done. I did have a chance to attend a couple of committee meetings. I went to the CERT meeting and the Citizen Corps Council, both which Mr. Scholl was participating in as well, and what an experience. It's pretty impressive to see the type of planning that goes on behind the scenes to prepare our community for emergency situations, and the lengths to which the city is willing to go to train people in a situation where we, as citizens, can respond in the event of an emergency. And I would encourage people, they're going to be looking for volunteers to come, get certified, and there will be some training that will be provided by our emergency response teams, and I think that that would be very much worth your, worth your time and effort. But anyway, that was, those were very encouraging meetings. I do have to apologize to Mr. Scholl. I've been playing some things kind of close to the vest because I wasn't sure how things were going to turn out, but it does turn out that my family will be moving. We have found a place out in the county, and I will no longer be a resident of Brigham City itself, so I do have to resign my position as a city councillor when that does take effect, which will be in the near future. We've been kind of caught off guard at how fast this has happened. We weren't even necessarily looking to move, but an opportunity presented itself and we grabbed hold of it, and so we're facing this change. So, I will be in attendance for the next city council meeting, but after that, I will no longer live in Brigham City, so I will not be serving as a city councillor. I do want to say I appreciate the opportunity. I've had to serve. It has been a fantastic experience. I can't even tell you how much I've learned. Anybody who has had the chance to work with me in the city says, you've got a lot more to learn yet, bub, and I agree with them completely. It's been a very humbling experience, but I've been very, very grateful for it. I don't know that I have much more to say than that, other than I'm really grateful for the chance I've had to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to not allow him to move. Okay. No, it's, my good friend is, he does this with a bit of a heavy heart, but we need to make sure that he's doing what's best for his family, just like, because family always comes first, so.
I do have to say, the first question people have asked me about this is, what's happening to the business? I will still be working here in Brigham City. It's a little tougher to pick a business up and move than it is to move your family from house to house, so I'll still be working. But then the number two question was whether or not I would have to resign as a city councillor, and that obviously is the case, so.
Well, we've enjoyed it, and I'm glad you're still across the street from me.
Yeah.
I was able to attend with Councilmember Jensen and Smith as we toured the city last week or this week? Last week. And it was a lot of fun. It met, it exceeded my expectations, just because I, not so much in the personnel, because they exceed everybody's expectations, I think. But you just don't know what goes on between a flush and then going out to the black slough until you take this tour and find out how much work and expertise goes into making sure that our city runs with lights, with refuse, with sewer treatment, with recreation. But I just want to, and I mentioned it in staff meeting this week, but I surely appreciate our employees and the amount of time and care they put into each other. They really care about each other, our directors and our employees, they care about each other, which is nice to see, and it makes for a healthy organization. Pardon me. This morning, we had the Safety Super Bowl as a city, and that was a lot of fun. It's great to get the staff, all the employees together, feed them some breakfast, and let them, let them talk and see each other. It was a great opportunity for them. They also watched some clips of what not to do or what people shouldn't have done. There's posts on YouTube, the what-not-to-do's, the fails, I think they call them. And then there were some safety questions, and we gave out prizes. That was, that was just a really good time. I can't wait for the barbecue this summer to be able to get together with them again. We, we need to make sure that we're praying for moisture. We're in desperate need. It's February, and I don't, I don't think we have enough in the hills to really make sure that we're not nervous coming this summer. So, let's make sure we're getting the word out there to, one, become conservation-minded, make sure that we're not wasting water, and, two, between now and the end of April, even into May, because we have had snow in May, that we're praying for moisture and hoping. And I want to thank the council for their support and also for their diligence in looking forward to their communities, or committees and service. Our action items, we'll move to our action items. Action item number one is a consideration of Wayne Co subdivision phase one final plat and a development agreement, and this is located at 250 North, 1200 West. We'll invite Mark Bradley to present and lead the discussion.
Mayor, council, good evening. All right, so this is the Wayne Co subdivision phase one final plat and development agreement, as mentioned. Here is the site located at 1200 West and the parcel ownership. Here is the final plat. And so, the final plat identifies the phase, this is the phase one that you'll see actually has quite a good, well-designed road network for this industrial subdivision. The Stub Street, there is a note that is identifying Lot 5 as made in the public comment that is actually being noted on the plat, so any future buyer would be aware of that. This allows the timing of Lot 5 to be developed with the improvement of the road when the timing is right. And then there are other notations on the plat. One of the notes will refer to the development agreement for the extension of 250 North and also 1550 West. When you look at the timing of the preliminary plat in July to now, it's because the developers and their engineers have spent quite a bit of time in work and preparation. If you, the developer applicant is here, he can address some of the process they've gone through. I have not been involved in all those situations, but you can identify that the wetland area of nondisturbances there in Lot number five. The remaining area is not affected. As we go through, this was, you can see the entire parcel, and you can see the green area for some of the wet land that was discussed, as well as, the yellow dashed line is the road master plan for the development agreement. And the development agreement is very similar to the one that was entered in with the property to the south, that is, the true north of Utah properties with the cannabis site. The key on that one, and I'm going to stop sharing and go into the development agreement, and just show you the meat of the text. You naturally have the signed agreement by the applicant, as well as reviewed by the city attorney, and the language is really a preference, a storyline of giving the background of why we're entering into a development agreement, and city code reference and state code as far as allowance of entering into a development agreement. And it becomes a binding document that is recorded with the property, so it runs with the land. The key-
Excuse me. Excuse me, Mayor, we lost the call, so I'm going to try to get a call back, okay?
Okay. Is it okay if we just suspend for a minute until that happens, Mark?
Sure.
Thank you. We probably lost before we started talking about the development agreement, Christina?
I think so.
Is the call related to this item?
Well, it's the virtual, it's the virtual link to our meeting, so you may want to just rehash-
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID, followed by pound. This meeting ID does not exist. Please re-enter your meeting ID, followed by pound. Enter your participant ID, followed by pound. Otherwise, just press pound to continue. You have entered the meeting as a panelist. Attendees can now hear you speak.
Okay, we're back on.
All right. We welcome back those that may be watching virtually. We appreciate the technology. We'll ask Mr. Bradley to just start over with the development agreement. That's okay, because that may be what they've missed.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Yeah, so-
What's that? You think we're okay, just picking up where we left off?
It shows that we're still live on YouTube, and I'm texting with Dave, so, oh, now he can hear. We're good.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Okay. All right, let's just pick up where we left off.
Sounds good. So, all right, so we're discussing the development agreement that has been prepared and entered. The developer applicant has signed it, agreeing to the development agreement. It's being presented to the council for your consideration to have the mayor sign. If approved, and it would be recorded with the property and run with the property. And the key on this development agreement is to really address and acknowledge that there is a road master plan, I mean, a planned master road on the property, and the timing or triggers that would, that would trigger an event that would require that improvement. So, this area is outside of Phase 1 that we're talking about. However, Phase 1 will be developing and constructing a leg of that master road itself on 250 North. So, they're already going to be constructing a good portion of it. It's the extension of 250 that would tie to 1550 West. And so, these are the trigger events. This is really the meat for your consideration is, is one, the timing, when the development of the immediate adjacent, south adjacent property requiring the public right-of-way to take place, and that would require really the west half of the cannabis site to really develop and need that road to connect. Secondly, when the to-be-determined site development of this property, the remaining portion of west of Phase 1 would be developed, it would trigger that event. Or, no, I guess that's number C, excuse me, letter C. B is the to-be-determined site development proposed by the remainder requires the public right-of-way over and through. I'm just trying to look at those two as I'm, and then upon that timeframe, that they would have a one-year date to have those approvals take place. And so, I can go back-
Once the trigger event occurs.
Yes.
Okay.
So, again, those are the key items. The layout of the development agreement is very consistent with the adjacent property. We also have an agreement down with Leo's, because that's where the portion of roadway would began, from Forest Street, and I can go extend out of this and go back to the other exhibit to show you the plat again. Now, also in your packet, you have a copy of the engineer's estimate for the cost of Phase 1 improvements, that they will enter into an escrow agreement that would be recorded with the plat. And you can see it's a significant amount. There's a lot of investment to develop this site. I'll just pull that back up so you can see again, so how that works with that segment of roadway. So, Phase 1, you can see with the lots, the dashed yellow is the master road, and we have the development agreement to the south, and this would be for this portion here. The red stub portion is a note on the plat, and that would be taken care of at the time of development of Lot 5. But that, all these are very important connectivity and access for our system, our transportation system in town, as you have companies that will come in and develop and use the property and distribute the traffic throughout the community over time. The developers here, if there's any further questions for them? If not, you have the information in your packet. Staff recommends approval subject to them, just finalizing those few items and in preparation for the plat to be recorded with the escrow agreement and authorizing the mayor to sign the development agreement.
All right, as we get into, as we open it up to council questions, if the gentleman, if they have a question for you, if you'd come up to the podium here and state your name to comment or to answer a question. Council, do you have any comments or questions?
The one-year, the trigger event for the improvement, is that the yellow dotted line, just the two going west, or the 1550 West to Forest?
Yes, both the 250 and the 1550 West on their property.
And this developer is going on their property?
Yeah.
So, the trigger event would, they would create the road continuing west and then to south to the edge of their property, and then would-
But is it developed with true north and these other ones to Forest?
No, not currently.
No. True North has a development agreement on their property as well, so when that portion of their property is developed, but they also have trigger events on theirs. So, if the property to the north, which is the remainder portion here, or to the south, the Jensen property, that's a trigger event that would require that road segment.
These need it, then it's going to trigger the rest of them.
Yes. Just so that you don't have a gap there when you're ready to connect the streets.
But there's nothing saying that they have to, this road has to be developed within a certain time period?
No.
At all?
There's not a timeframe.
It's a tyranny, just to the edge of their property.
Other than when the property is developed itself, or when the other adjacent properties develop, but it's not like in five years, in 15 years.
So, they can go on the 1200, is it 1250 West, or?
250 North is the south road.
Does 1200 West can actually handle the traffic for all this development?
It really should. I mean, naturally, when you have more connectivity and routes, just like we have in the center part of town, you can distribute traffic better, but 12th West is, is going to be 106-foot wide right-of-way. And so, we have that portion along true north that has been widened. That's a little wider on their portion. It will become a turn lane going with southbound traffic, but there will be a little widening that will be done with this project and a little more on the east side as that property is developed further. But overall, I mean, that's an excellent question. If this all built out before the Jensen's property is developed and- If this all build out before the Jensen's property is developed and things like that, you know, the city would need to look at that as far as moving truck, traffic. But generally, this area is really a great location for those industrial uses and the truck traffic. Even moving out from Jam and New Core, naturally, some will go north on the North 900, but going out to Loves and get serviced and moving out to the freeway, hopefully that will distribute some of that traffic both ways.
Mark, could you clarify what is happening with the wetlands as addressed by Mrs. Larson?
Yeah, to my understanding, with, they're not even, they're not touching the wetland on the remnant piece. And so the only portion you have is in lot five, but I probably need to allow the applicant to represent if there's any work that is required of them. But I, it looks like it's been designed, and they've worked through a lot of those details, so I'd better allow them to address that question a little further.
We had Cagle Environmental-
Like, just stating your name for the record?
Josh Brager.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we had Cagle Environmental come in, and they delineated all the wetlands, and we spent months, years delineating it out, and making sure that we weren't going to intrude into any of the wetlands, so.
Thank you.
Mayor, I would move that we approve the subdivision Phase One Final Plat Development Agreement located at 250 North, 1200 West, as outlined.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Is this a roll call, Christina?
No, Mayor.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. We'll now move on to our discussion items, pool wages. This is a comeback from last council meeting, and we'll invite Kristi or just Amber to come up and present. Just Amber. Thank you.
Hi, how are you all tonight?
Good.
So we're coming back with the updates to our wage plan after the approval of the $7 plan from last meeting. This is the original $6 plan that we presented. In front of you, it's the one that we actually up to, up to the $7 plan, which is right here. There ends up being a difference of $19,342 from the $650 plan, and our intention with that money is to put that straight into our pool staff wages. With that, it's not including the incentive plan that we talked about. That is just to stay in the original money that was there, in that $95,000. This is the updates to it. We have what we presented last meeting with the $650 plan in the gray, and then in the green is the $7 plan. As you can see, there has been a significant increase in our wages. This does leave us about $500 buffer within that $19,000 in case we have some different distribution between, you know, a lifeguard three and a lifeguard one, because this is assuming we have exactly one-third in each category.
Perfect. Any other questions, council? This is just discussion items, so we don't need a motion on this. This is just coming back informing.
Now, at the last council meeting, we approved a $7 entrance fee, but not the $7 plan. Do we need to repeal that in order to approve the $7 plan, or?
I actually think when we looked into it, she did pass out a sheet that had all of the other amounts on there, and it was approved. When we read, we listened to the minutes again, went and looked at it, and we felt comfortable going forward with the sheet that was passed out.
So we took that into consideration in this plan.
Fantastic. Anything else, council?
Do you feel good with your employees and your staff that this is a-
I do. I went back and forth with lots of different plans to come down to this one. This one leaves us enough buffer within that $95,000 here that we can either grow in the future or use that towards chemicals. Those prices have gone up. We have lots of things that we can do with it, and this still gives us, I mean, it's a massive jump for them. I've had so many kids that are excited about this, that were not excited until this started becoming a discussion.
And the reason for this was because you needed to have a fully qualified staff?
Yes. The reason for this is because we, I mean, I do need new guards every year, because naturally we are going to have some turnover, but I need returners. And the fact that I have kids now that are excited to come back because of this is huge.
Good, great.
And we appreciate the council for allowing us to do this.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you, Amber.
Thank you guys so much.
All right. We do have a closed session to discuss purchase, exchange, or lease of real property, and so we'll need a motion.
Move that we adjourn to closed session.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, and this will be roll call. And we'll start with Alden.
Alden's an aye.
Ryan's aye.
Robin's aye.
Matt, aye.
Joe's aye.
Thank you. It's unanimous. We are now going to be moving into closed session.
Thank you, everyone.
We excuse you. Thanks for coming, everybody. Good luck in your meeting.
Hey, good luck in your wrestling.
Thank you.
Yes, good luck, Tanner.
Thank you, see you guys. Hey, keep an eye on Doug Crainer, would you?
I will, so can Peter Trump.
Yes, you can.
They've already all dyed their hair black. That's the tradition.
Goodbye.